We're also going to have a presentation on jail population trends as well as an update on the North Carolina Workforce Board Consolidation Study. Are there any other items that commissioners wanted to add to the agenda for our briefing meeting? All right, are there any questions about any items on the agenda for the regular meeting?
There's a proclamation on there for the 230th anniversary. I'm not sure if you wanted to ask anyone to read that proclamation.
Sure. We'll figure that out between now and five. But yeah, I'm sure we can, we'll have someone do that. Okay. And so Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Ferrara is not able to be in the meeting today. She's not feeling well, so she's going to be able to participate in the briefing meeting virtually. And then at the 5:00 meeting, Mr. Drew, could you just refresh us on what the procedure is if the commissioner can't be physically present because of they're not feeling well or other reasons, what the protocol is?
Well, yes, sir. Fortunately, the legislature did within the last couple of months amend the remote meeting statute to allow that if you have a regularly scheduled meeting and more than six hours before that meeting, a commissioner or board member for whatever reason cannot participate, you can amend your notice to allow for a remote meeting. So we did that just before 11:00 a.m. this morning. So Commissioner Beach-Ferrara can participate remotely. The only thing I'll remind the board to do, or the chair in particular, is that any votes will have to be done by roll call.
Great.
And that will take care of it.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, then let's move on and let's start off with the COVID update.
Max tells me that our screen up here is not acting normally, so I've brought my laptop just in case I do need it, and I'm going to put that there. So as always, thank you for the time today for this COVID-19 update. Best wishes to everyone on our board and listening to us through the community update for the new year. Gotcha. There we go. So at this point, Buncombe County has surpassed 34,000 total COVID cases. In addition, we have lost 454 neighbors as of yesterday in COVID-19-related deaths, with a dozen occurring in the last couple of weeks. And today, I wish I was bringing you good news for this new year, but unfortunately, in terms of our local metrics, there's not much good news to share. As case rates are currently skyrocketing, I'm sorry. There we go. As of yesterday, we were experiencing 654 new cases per 100,000 per week. This is a tremendous increase from the last month, when our rate was around 200 new cases per 100,000. And this is far greater than what we saw at the peak of the winter 2021, so that's the December, starting in December 2020 into January and February and March of 2021. It's much larger than the peak that we saw in the winter of 2021 surge just a year ago. And in a couple of slides, I'll show you that illustration through our EPI curve. Additionally, the percent positivity has increased to 13.7% as of yesterday. This is also a significant increase from just one month ago, when I presented to you all last, when the percent positivity was about 6.6. Our death rate saw a decline in the last week, but remains very high with four additional deaths added. Also troubling is our steadily increasing hospitalizations. Dr. Bill Hathaway is joining me today and will provide more insight on the impact of our current surge on local hospitals. But in short, the percent of inpatient beds occupied by COVID-19 is increasing and is now close to 10%, which would be that warning zone. I am going to show you the EPI curve and go back to the previous statement and discuss it a little bit in the context of this epidemiological history. And what you're seeing right now is the hour Buncombe County COVID-19 story in peaks and valleys since March of 2020. Our current surge is at the far end. Now, if I zoom in and just show you the EPI curve from December 2020, which is showing right now, and what that's about the surge from last year until now, you can see the stark difference between the peak of last year's surge around this time and the peak that are, and what we are seeing right now with the current Omicron surge. It is considerably more steep and higher. You can also see that precipitous rise in cases in the last couple of weeks, with the week prior being the most significant so far. That, that far end EPI curve was already looking fairly steep in its incline in the last couple of weeks. That has just exponentially increased, as you can see there. This surge appears to be dwarfing any of those of the January 2021 and the Delta surges in comparison. It's also happening very quickly and spreading very rapidly.
Stacy, a quick question. Based on that EPI curve, can you tell or have a best guess on the approximate start date of our Omicron wave of roughly when it entered the testing data for the county?
It's likely that we were seeing it, so after Thanksgiving, we had seen a slight decrease, and then we plateaued pretty high, and then started seeing it increase again. And though while sequencing wasn't showing a lot of Omicron at the time, I suspect that we were starting to see it then. So those weeks after Thanksgiving and early December, we were likely starting to see the increase and the effect of Omicron, and now most certainly after the holidays, seeing it tremendously more. I will say that the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services respiratory report that shows the sequencing, it's about a week behind or so, and its most current week, I believe, was like December, maybe 11th or mid-December. It was still only showing less than 15%, I believe, Omicron. I suspect that when we see the respiratory report update this week and into the next week, that we'll see it much more considerably the burden of COVID cases at this point. So because of the case rates and their exponential increase and seeing much higher levels than our previous surges, and knowing that our current, currently circulating Omicron variant is far more contagious than previous iterations, and that our hospitalizations are increasing, and because while at new, right now, while new at-home therapeutical therapeutics are available, they are limited in supply throughout the state, I am recommending that the face covering requirement be extended to no less than February 9th, and strongly recommend that it be extended until February 23rd. As I've said before, there may be a day in the near future when we can tolerate higher case rates and move to general public recommendations, particularly when our at-home therapeutics are more readily available and greater supply, so that we can keep more people out of the hospital, but that day is not today. I'm going to move on now and switch gears a little to our testing initiatives. And spend a little time talking about what testing efforts we have in our community. There are numerous testing initiatives in place within the community, including fixed site testing, community pop-ups, and retail testing options. I did want to highlight, you'll see on the, on the screen there, that our HARA's Convention Center is continuing to operate. We did hear this morning that those hours may be changing to, from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m., but I'm waiting for official confirmation on that, as the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services website still shows that is 10:00 to 2:00. But there are numerous places and testing providers within our community. I did want to highlight the testing efforts in place in our school systems that utilize rapid testing conducted by school nurses and other trained personnel to help quickly identify suspect cases prior to presenting to the classroom, testing of close contacts when necessary, and testing individuals throughout the course of the school day that may present with symptoms consistent with COVID-19. And Buncombe County HHS has supported the school nursing leadership and team in implementing these testing initiatives that are then coupled with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Strong Schools Toolkit to ensure our learning environments are safe and as healthy as they can be, so that our children can remain in-person learning, which we know is not only beneficial for their intellectual growth, but also their social and emotional health. So special thanks to the school nursing teams and our school nurse leadership, particularly April Bauer, and our school systems leadership for their commitment to healthy and safe learning environments. Additionally, our community is fortunate to have community health worker programs that provide support, education, and linkages to COVID-19 resources, including testing and vaccine in our communities. The community health worker groups are very similar to the community ambassador programs that Commissioner Wells shared with me earlier in the week. In our community, we have groups like EFA, which is the Institute for Preventive Healthcare and Advocacy, led by Kathy Avery Unetti, and Healthier Together, who all utilize the talents and skills of community health workers. And all these groups have one thing in common, which is equity is the focus of their work. And just to give you a couple of examples of what testing efforts are happening in that space, EFA has routinely visited communities throughout Buncombe County, going door-to-door to, one, listen to the concerns, two, provide accurate and trusted information by those community health workers who are a part of the community in which they work, and, three, connect individuals to services like testing and vaccination. Specifically, EFA has provided approximately 400 at-home rapid tests to members of the community. And just while I'm mentioning the work of the community health workers, another example, this time on the vaccine side, Healthier Together was instrumental in the Biltmore Church vaccine outreach collaboration with the Mexican consulate that occurred in October. Healthier Together worked with Latinx communities to get the word out about the importance of vaccine, provided those communities with accurate information about the vaccine, and worked with Buncombe County HHS to provide a welcoming and accessible space for a four-day event in which for community members to receive their vaccine. So many thanks to the numerous community health workers within our county, and many of whom have worked out throughout our region to provide those services. And just to briefly tell you about some new testing initiatives that are on the horizon for Buncombe County, Buncombe County HHS is building off that model of the community health workers and purchasing a supply of rapid at-home test kits for community distribution. Staff is currently working to have tests hopefully arrive next week. This will heavily be dependent on vendor supply, which has changed quite, quite a lot in the last week or so. We plan to work with our existing partners in communities to have rapid tests available in their locations for distribution and pickup by community members. Locations may include community centers throughout the county, fire departments, homeless shelters, libraries, churches, even at some of our vaccine events, and again, with our community health workers. So details about that initiative will be finalized upon the receipt of those test kits, and dependent on the quantity in which we actually get to receive. In addition to tests, the plan includes providing prepackaged face coverings to selected, to those selected community locations for distribution to the public as well. So I just did want to mention that for folks who are already utilizing at-home rapid testing, I want to remind everyone that those tests are heavily relying on you getting a good sample, so please follow those directions closely, and also that rapid antigen at-home tests are most accurate when viral load is higher and when symptoms are present. They can be less accurate for those who do not have any symptoms or have lower viral loads. So this is why, most typically, we're using them for those who are experiencing symptoms or are known to have a confirmed exposure to a positive case. And then lastly, I did want to mention that there are opportunities for additional testing surge resources with FEMA and North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, both of which I have submitted proposals for, and those are pending, and those would be not just for Buncombe County, but would help service other surrounding areas as well. And now, we're going to move on to vaccine, and I'm going to go pretty quickly through this. When I last presented, Buncombe County was getting ready to wrap up our pediatric vaccine events, and we completed our Saturday at-school events prior to the public school release for winter break. Between Buncombe County HHS and MAHEC and FEMA partners, we administered over 1,200 doses of vaccine with this campaign. In addition, the Eddington Center was set up as a state vaccine site for pediatrics and administered over 630 doses. So I just wanted to thank all of the vaccine providers, particularly in that campaign right before the winter holidays, for all their efforts, and did want to remind folks that we have our HHS fixed sites still operating and administering 300 to 400 doses per week, and other, other vaccine providers are available through retail pharmacies, medical providers, and others. What's on the horizon for vaccine? I'm sorry. All right, just skipped ahead. So as a result of the concerted effort by vaccine providers in Buncombe County, we've seen about a third of our pediatric population receive their first dose in about two months' time. Additionally, we see our adolescent population catching up with our 18- to 24-year-olds and soon approaching 60%. Our populations that are 25 years and older are all now reached 70% or more, again with our 65 and 75 and older population having the highest rates. Overall, 71% of our eligible population, that's five and up, have received one dose of vaccine, and 68% of the eligible population has been fully vaccinated at this point. When I last checked a couple of weeks ago, about a little over 40% of those who are fully vaccinated have received a third or booster dose. So I'll be able to connect with Department of Health and Human Services again before our next meeting and give you an updated number.
That 40% is based on what date?
That's a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
There we go. So future vaccine planning, so what's on the horizon? Knowing that we do still have some work to do in helping folks get to their booster status, our future efforts will be focused on giving the new year a boost, focused campaigns on boosters, and revising, revamping regional messaging to inform, encourage, and remind people about their boosters. Additionally, we are already doing early planning for the adolescent boosters. Just this week, FDA has authorized boosters for 12- to 15-year-olds. However, remember, that's a multi-step process. The CDC has not provided their recommendation at this time. So in anticipation of those boosters for that age group, our Public Health Operations Team has begun prelim planning for similar Saturday events, building off the success that we had before the winter break. And our team will be engaging with school partners in the coming days to finalize, to discuss and finalize those events.
Stacy, a question about the boosters.
Yes.
Do you have a sense for the congregant living facilities about boosters for those, and how many of them have already taken care of that or still have need?
So we continually have been going out to the long-term care facilities who needed support for vaccine. I can get those numbers for you. I don't have them with me today about what number that we've done that were boosters for that. And then what we found is many of the large, the large long-term care facilities have taken care of that through either commercial partners or through their own staffing. So I will get a number for you for, for what we've been able to do. Yeah. And so just a reminder, for those who are still in need of vaccine, please visit myspot.nc.gov to find a vaccine provider near you. And then just in summary, to close this all out before Dr. Hathaway provides some information, there are just some key things right now with Omicron spreading essentially like wildfire that I want folks to remember, and these are: get vaccinated, get boosted when eligible, get tested if exposed or experiencing symptoms, get your face covering and wear it when you are in indoor public spaces, get some distance between you and others, and get those hands clean, sanitize, and wash them often. Please help us boost our new year and hopefully reduce the spread of COVID-19. That's all I have for you today. Happy to answer questions, or I can turn it over to Dr. Hathaway for the hospital perspective.
Stacy, I guess one question or comment, going back to your testing slide about the rapid antigen testing and trying to find that supply, and I know every person in North America is trying to find one right now. I think it sounded like there's money from NC DHHS to do that for 5,000. Is there a scenario, I mean, is there a scenario which we could use our own funds to purchase, you know, triple that, or is it more of a supply constraint than?
I'll tell you about what we're doing so far and then allow County Manager Pender to weigh in. So we do have funds through an agreement addenda, an ELC, which is just that expanded testing protocols and funding that is AA 543 that will allow us to purchase. And so we, we have funds that can purchase up to 5,000 right now. We did want to limit that to a limited supply at first, until we see how quickly they get distributed and how quickly they get picked up. There's a, there's potential for us to use more of those funds. They are also the funds that we use to help support our temporary and contract workers that are in that, working in that space, too. And then beyond that, it would be discussions if we, if we found that our budget in AA 543, that those ELC testing funds could not cover any more, we would be coming back to Command Center where county leadership is to request further discussion.
Can I ask a follow-up question? I just want to make sure I heard that correctly. So at this time, you believe the county has resources to purchase additional tests, and that would need to come out of the COVID response funding that the commission has approved from the Recovery Act funding? Is that, am I hearing you correctly?
That's correct. Right now, public health has specific funding through this agreement addenda with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services that we've been using to help fund contracted and temporary staff, other testing resources, and we can use this, this funding to purchase these tests. That is an allowable.
I just want to make sure I have all my acronyms straight. There's a lot.
And to Parker's question, so in the event that that money expires, we do have that million dollars that you guys allocated from ARPA. We have used some of that already, though, but there's still money there that we could use to buy additional. But the reason why I asked Stacy to only do 5,000 at this point is the state and the federal opportunities that are going to be sending us testing. So my goal was this is a bridge, is how I was framing it. This is a bridge to get us to when we get state testing or federal testing. In the event that that doesn't come through, we have more funds that we could buy more.
Thank you for that reminder. That's correct, that there, there are two other avenues that we will be learning more information about. One, the federal avenue to get at-home tests to Americans at their home. More details are going to be coming about, like what are the real logistics about that? How do people get them? And then through the Department of Health and Human Services here in North Carolina, we do already have some avenues for folks to get at-home testing collection kits that then are sent off and have a fairly quick turnaround. But also, there is movement to get at-home rapid tests, like the antigen tests that we're ordering at a state level, too, that local health departments could order a supply of as well. So this is, this is that bridge until we learn more about what those two programs may or may not be able to do.
Okay. I guess last question about, kind of shifting a question to PCR test capacity. I've been, I've been trying to find this, you know, other places in the country like DC or New York where Omicron is kind of spread it faster ahead of us. I can't tell if there's generally enough capacity, if there's, if these labs are running out of the ability to, to test this many individuals.
That's a great question. And so, over the last two years, we have built, not just in North Carolina, but nationwide, laboratory capacity for this. And so what I think you're seeing now is not necessarily a lack of capacity. It is that the demand is so high because of how quickly Omicron is spreading right now, that just the sheer numbers at this point are just so large. And because of, you know, we're almost at 700 cases per 100,000 per week. We've never seen a number like that in the time that I've been recording data for, for us. That alone means that there are probably many more cases that are not being reported, right? And so we just have so much spread right now. And so what you're seeing is, I don't think what you're seeing is necessarily a lack of capacity, because that has grown leaps and bounds. And at the governor's briefing, two, two briefings ago, they mentioned like how large they had, had grown that North Carolina lab capacity. I think what we're really seeing is that this particular iteration of the virus is so much ahead of us that, you know, we're, we're playing catch-up with it. And so, you know, I just want to remind the community that, yes, there are probably going to be some long lines, and we can, you know, that can be fairly tolerated, because there's just so many folks who need testing, either because they're having symptoms, or they know now that they have been confirmed as an exposure to a positive case, because it's spreading so quickly. So just a reminder, if you're having symptoms, seek out testing. Just, you know, remember if you're going to be using at-home testing, to follow those directions, because it does really rely on you getting a good sample. Make sure that you isolate if you're having symptoms, and continue to just do the basic types of things that will help us reduce the spread and that will protect you. Wear your mask, keep some distance, wash your hands, limit your interactions. Like this, this is a real, this is going to be a really hard few weeks.
I'd want to follow the question about test, about testing and the rapid test. You mentioned that the rapid tests are less likely to be accurate if a person doesn't have symptoms, right? If a person doesn't have symptoms, based on what we understand about the Omicron variant now, are they still possible for them to spread to other people, even if they're non-symptomatic and would be tested and the test would come back negative?
Yes, all of that's still possible. The only, the, the difference between sort of the traditional PCR and what we know, like when folks talk about rapid, they're typically talking about rapid antigen tests. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, folks understand there are different types of rapid tests. Some of them are even PCR. But traditionally, folks are talking about the difference between a PCR and a rapid antigen. And PCR is what we consider that gold standard, right? What we know about rapid antigen tests is that they are more, most accurate, most sensitive, when folks have a higher, higher viral load, or that they are symptomatic and in that very infectious period. They tend to be less accurate and less sensitive when folks have lower viral loads or asymptomatic. And so we just want to caution folks to remember that.
And so they're less infectious, but still doesn't mean they're not infectious.
That's right. Doesn't mean that they're not infectious. Means viral load may be lower.
Okay, thank you.
Robert?
Stacy, this might be a question. With this big spike we're seeing now, after the holidays and everything, have you got any numbers to show how many people that have had the full vaccine booster that it's affecting?
Yeah, and so in general, I have statewide data, which we can assume, like we're no different than the rest of the state. So I, you know, we have much better aggregate data around statewide numbers. What I can tell you is the last respiratory report, it has been fairly consistent that about anywhere from 15% to 20% of all the infections that we're seeing are post-vaccination infections. So that's been pretty consistent for a while now. What you're probably hearing more about is that we have a lot more people vaccinated, right? So when that denominator, when that, when that big number changes to even a bigger number, that 15% to 20% now is a, a bigger number of actual individuals that you're seeing, right? But the percentage, when we look at all the cases, it hasn't changed that much. It's still teetering somewhere around the 20% mark.
Thank you, Stacy.
Welcome, Dr. Hathaway.
Hathaway, thanks for being here.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me. I always appreciate the opportunity to be here. Stacy did such a nice job of covering just about everything. I hope my update's brief, and I'm happy to take questions. To echo Stacy's major point is the transmissibility of Omicron is really unbelievable. If you notice, we had about 11,000 cases per day on our number of cases on the state EPI curve during the last peak, and we had 19,000 just a few days ago. So there's a dramatic increase in the number of cases per day. The silver lining, and I wouldn't even call it silver, let's call it nickel lining around this cloud, is that it appears to be less virulent, it causes less severe disease. And so if it had been as virulent as Delta or any of the other strains, we would be overwhelmed with hospitalizations right now. The good news is, we haven't seen that yet, but we're still on the upward trend of the hospitalizations in our community and across the state and across the country. The... The total number today in our system, so all seven of our hospitals, was 113 patients hospitalized. Eighty-four of those were adults and four of those were children. That is in comparison to our peak numbers, which were actually in January of a year ago, which was over 180 patients in the system and a peak admission hospital of around 135 to 140. So we're still far below that number, but because of the tremendous numbers of infections, even if it's a smaller percentage, it's going to be a high number of hospitalizations. As Stacy pointed out, we've seen that the numbers of patients who are hospitalized, who have been vaccinated, is a very, very, very small percentage overall, relatively small percentage overall of the total numbers of hospitalizations. The numbers that we have, and I'm just going to be totally honest with you, it's difficult to track who's been vaccinated or not because we're reliant on self-reporting from the patients and so it's not always clear. But it was between 5 and 10% of our hospitalizations right now are vaccinated. I suspect that number's a little bit higher and those who have been boosted comprise a very, an even smaller number of those. So the point there is, as Stacy emphasized, and I'd like to repeat, is the vaccines are safe and effective, the vaccines work at decreasing severity of illness, hospitalization and likelihood of death. And so even if you get infected, and we will all hear stories about people who've been infected, who've been vaccinated and boosted, my son is one of those. The good news is he had very minimal symptoms, barely knew he had a cold, and that's what we're striving for, be, turning this virus into an endemic illness that we can live with and keep people out of the hospital and keep people from getting severely ill. We are hopeful that some of the newer therapies that are to become available that have been approved, including the oral therapies from Pfizer and Merck, which inhibit viral replication so the virus can't reproduce in your body, will have an impact on our community going forward. The problem is they're just not available. They're just in such short supply right now that it's going to be a while. So don't count on that as your backup for when you're not vaccinated, get vaccinated. And if I haven't mentioned it before, get vaccinated. The last thing I'd like to mention is we've done some sophisticated analytics through our parent company at HCA to look at when we think we might be seeing the peak of this current pandemic. There is data out of South Africa, which suggested a four-week course to, to the peak. And so that would put us somewhere into mid to late January when we'd start to come down. It was interestingly, in comparison to the prior peaks from the surges, this is, as Stacy showed in her EPI curve, a very steep and rapid rise. And we expect a steep and rapid decline, or we're hopeful for a steep and rapid decline once we see the decline. I think that covers the bulk of the points that I wanted to make. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions, commissioners?
Hathaway, I got a couple, a couple of questions. You mentioned the hospitalization data. I've tried to determine this, I guess on your website, but is that taking into account both patients that are hospitalized with COVID and for COVID? Do you separate those numbers or?
I'm sorry, with COVID and?
A person that's hospitalized with COVID, as opposed to hospitalized for COVID, as in they, they show up for a different reason, end up having?
It, it doesn't separate those out, but the vast majority are, are hospitalized for COVID. It's, what we do is we look at the positive test in relationship to the date of their admission. So we've had some patients who've been in the hospital who test positive, they'll be there for six weeks for other reasons. That's not, no longer considered a COVID hospitalization. But if a patient comes in with acute gallbladder problems, coincidentally tests positive and has COVID, they're included in that number also.
I, it's, I've heard anecdotes and rumors, which I, which happen and people email me those things.
Sure. I get those emails.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I guess, I guess as a follow-up, are all types of patients that end up in your system, are they tested for the coronavirus?
No, so we only test if they, if there's an indication to test, if we believe that they have COVID. So this is not, we have, you know, 700-plus patients in the hospital right now. We don't test each of those for COVID and then a certain number of those coincidentally have COVID, but they're in for knee surgery, as an example. That's not the case. These are really COVID cases. For all practical purposes, with perhaps just a very, very, very small number of exceptions.
There's some category of people that, like I, I think I was at mission for like an hour a couple of weeks ago for something unrelated and I was, of course, not tested, but I assume there's some category of, of people that are?
Yeah, we test, so, so our testing policy is to test when there's an indication, they come in with signs or symptoms of COVID illness, which of course are upper respiratory illnesses, pneumonia, et cetera. And, and we don't, we do screen high-risk patients who are undergoing elective surgeries. They, they would not have their surgery performed unless it was an emergency. They might be included in that, in that number, but that's a minority, a very, you know, that's less than one or two a week if, if that.
My, my final thought, thought or question, you know, I've read other, other communities across the country, whether it's hospitals or EMS, EMS units or whatever, they've, they have a lot of staff out because they're sick. Because of the coronavirus. Is, do you have staffing concerns, I guess, over the next month? Are you?
Yes, we do. We, you know, there's staffing concerns, given the nationwide nursing shortage as an example. The other places where we have significant staffing issues, independent of the COVID challenges right now, but exacerbated by those, are in our food nutrition services and EVS workers. We all know that unemployment is now dipping to very low levels. Those workers are in high demand by all of the tourist industry here in Asheville and other people, so there, it's a very competitive workforce. And, and so we have, we have challenges in many places. We're using contract labor, offering overtime, surge pay, et cetera, all the strategies that we can have available to bump that up. And right now, we're doing okay. We're not where we want to be, but you know, it's a fine line between the demand and supply that we have right now. Thank you. Yep.
Dr. Hathaway, I think we hear from a lot of folks, particularly with Omicron, that it's not that bad, it's just like a cold, I might as well just go ahead and get it and get it over with. Can you share with us any data research about long-haul COVID and why we shouldn't necessarily feel like it's okay to get it, it's just a cold? What, what are you seeing in, in medical research in regards to long-term impacts of having COVID?
Yeah, so a couple of thoughts before I hit the long-haul COVID, the, you know, the, the patients in our ICU and on the ventilators would disagree with the lack of severity, you know? There is a segment of the population who's going to get severely ill. We're, we're fortunate that it's not as bad as others, but you, it's, it's hard to predict. We know there's certain risk factors for severe illness, but neither you nor I want anyone to believe that they should roll the dice. It's not a, it's not a game of chance that you want to play. Long-haul COVID is really very, very interesting and intriguing. No one really understands or can I fully identify the, the pathology of it. We believe it's in part related to the body's own response to the illness and maybe even producing antibodies against the antibodies that we developed for, in response to the infection. Lots of questions about that. The typical symptoms involve fatigue, this COVID brain fog. I was joking around that we all seem to be in a COVID brain fog, but this is a real illness where people just don't have the clarity of thought that they, they usually have. They have typical symptoms of what we call an autonomic instability. Those are fancy words. What does that mean? It means that their heart rate goes up too fast when they stand up, they're short of breath, they don't have the normal regulatory response to normal stimuli that you have. So you just feel terrible for a long time. Where there's some data out there that suggests that, interestingly, that vaccination afterwards may actually be helpful. That's in part anecdotal. It, it appears to have features which is in many ways consistent with what we used to call chronic fatigue syndrome. And then there's an illness called POTS or postural orthostatic tachycardia syndrome, which is that, you know, stand up, you get dizzy, short of breath, rapid heart rate. So lots that we're learning, but that's, I think, that's going to be an exceptionally intriguing, from a scientific point of view, field of investigation over the next few years as we learn more about it. Thanks for asking that question.
Dr. Hathaway, I have one question about the kids. Now that it's, you know, it appears that Omicron, it really spreads a lot quicker than the other variants. Do you foresee that as we reopen schools, that we'll see a jump in Omicron from the kids, especially school-aged kids?
Yes, just like we anticipated that Thanksgiving and Christmas with gatherings of family members in indoor spaces will increase spread, we know that any time where we're close together will increase. And as Stacy's data pointed out, we're still at, you know, very minority. We haven't even hit 50% for the eligible pediatric population to be vaccinated yet. And so that's a group that is going to see increased numbers of cases. And then if they get the cases, they can spread them to the most vulnerable and then they can become hospitalized. We have seen, both locally, we're at four peds patients hospitalized. That's about as high as we've been locally. It's not a very big number in the grand scheme of things, but it's higher than it's been. And we have seen trends out of New York and within our HCA hospitalizations across the country where there's an increase. It's still not a big number, but it should be zero, right? We don't want any kids to be ill or sick with this, you know, potentially very serious illness. And so it's important to, again, as we've said before and will say again, get the vaccinations and, and get the series and when you're eligible for the booster, get the booster. And kids too. It's safe.
Thanks.
All right, commissioners, thank you for your questions. Dr. Hathaway, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Stacy, thank you and your team as well for all your great work. All right, the next item on our agenda is we're going to get an update on our Buncombe County jail population trends. I see Sheriff Miller is with us. Sheriff, thank you for being with us today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I'm Tiffany Hanacho with Justice Services and I have Dr. Lee Creighton with Strategy and Innovation presenting as well. We're coming before you today to talk about our, can you guys hear me okay? Our jail population trends that we've seen. If we go to the next slide, a quick overview, we're going to be talking about our kind of background, how we were pre-pandemic, the system's response to the pandemic, what our daily trends are and what we would expect to see and how the sheriff is proposing to manage and operate the jail based on trends. And then we'll talk about future opportunities. As far as quick background, we have been steadily increasing our population over a number of years. We've been working since 2018. We can go to the next slide with the partners, MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge. We have infused a lot of resources into our local justice system, including funding, technical assistance trainings, networking with other peers in the, in the nation that are also struggling with jail population and trying to effectively manage without seeing tremendous growth or trying to hold off growth with jail population. Our reductions were not realized until the pandemic, but these reductions have proven to be temporary and numbers are beginning to look more like pre-pandemic numbers. And so we've kind of seen a return to our baseline. So if we go to the next slide, I'll talk about our pre-pandemic state. The county is investing in programs, including jail diversion and reentry. We have three criminal courts that we fund. We also support the district attorney's office in funding a jail-based prosecution team. So efforts to maintain and safely reduce the jail population is something, again, that we've been working on. Staff has worked and, and worked with court partners and public safety partners to employ various different evidence-based strategies for years. So the hopes of the progress have continued, but significant change didn't come. COVID presented a unique opportunity and like most industries, we're faced with a public health crisis. And so the sheriff's leadership working with court partners and law enforcement to employ some of those best practices and strategies that we were trying to do in years previous. We made big impacts. They were made without compromising public safety. I'll talk about that on the next slide. The sheriff's office was able to close two housing units, which is huge, about 80 beds were taken offline during that time period. And so we do not want to lose that. We want to be able to sustain, sustain our reduction efforts. But some of those strategies were temporary and so void of sustaining those practices, we are quickly seeing a return to our pre-pandemic levels. And so the next slide talks about the, what did we do during the time of the major part of the pandemic, the stay-home, stay-safe order? We had immediate responses, including issuing citations in lieu of arrests for nonviolent offenses and not arresting for low-level offenses. Court partners were employing strategies such as having a public defender at first appearances. They were releasing those low-level misdemeanors from custody before the first appearance. They were also issuing citations for failure to appear, so if someone didn't come to court, instead of doubling the bond, they were actually stating that citation, so law enforcement would just reissue the court date. Probation was being in early. They were excusing defendants from the continuance hearings if nothing was going to happen at that particular court date and then conducting virtual pleas for misdemeanors. So people were able to plead for the crime. Some things that are still being in place, especially from law enforcement, is issuing citations for nonviolent offenses and the arrests for low-level offenses have continued to remain low. Lee will talk about kind of that booking data on who's coming into the jail and how though they're staying. The last thing we saw was that is kind of staying is our district court held three special sessions to kind of resolve some of those low-level felonies and probation violations and bond reviews quickly. So again, I mentioned previously that the changes during the pandemic was thanks to the leadership of Sheriff Miller and his efforts to engage partners to maintain safety and healthy for those in his care. And we would like to note that some of these lack known causation for lower arrests. We cannot determine whether or not it was the challenges at APD resulted in the lower arrests that we're continuing to see, but we must prepare for the possibility of increase as staffing levels of officers increase. So we talked about the next slide. I know many people want to look at, based on the amount of people that are being released for custody, what changes did we see with regards to public safety? So we were able to take a shot, a snapshot in time for two time periods. Pre-COVID, the year 2019, from March to July, the number of individuals being released, which was actually a little bit more than what we saw folks being released from the same time period of March, July 2020, mainly because there weren't people coming in. So they released a great pool of people without new people coming in. And what we noticed, we saw the same, about the same percentage of people returning to custody for a new charge. And what we want to note is the number of volume changes, so the amount of people committing new violent crime was the same. It was a higher percentage due to the smaller number of nonviolent charges returning, but overall, we saw the same amount of people returning for new violent charge. So that just leaves us to note that although more people were being released, we had the same number of people being charged for committing new violent charges.
Good afternoon. I'm going to talk through a few additional data points in these next few slides. So Tiffany, Tiffany talked a little bit about how we were seeing an increasing jail population and how it's been a focus prior to the pandemic. And that's what this slide is meant to illustrate, just to orient you a little bit about what these different lines mean. That dotted line represents our operational capacity for the 604-bed facility. That 604 beds includes the annex, which is currently closed. But the operational capacity, according to the National Institute of Corrections, this is the capacity of the facility that really accounts for population peaking throughout the year, as well as resources and staffing within the the year as well as resources and staffing within the facility. So population levels above operational capacity, according to the National Institute of Corrections, compromises the facility's classification system. And what that does is creates a more volatile and potentially dangerous environment for individuals housed and working in the facility because the amount of flexibility within the facility for housing people is limited. So you do not want to be above that dotted line, uh, very long, um, due to the risks, um, that, that, that compromise classification system, uh, would bring. The bottom blue line represents what we call our local jail population. That's going to be people who are in pre-trial, um, custody, so people who have not bonded out and have pending charges here in Buncombe County. It's also going to be people who have been sentenced for crimes, um, and they were sentenced to serve jail time. Um, the contract is the other line, the green line. That represents a handful of contracts that the sheriff's office has with the state of North Carolina, as well as the federal government and several other local jurisdictions to house individuals on their behalf. So what you can see, this is back to 2015 and, uh, to 2019. If you look at that blue line, uh, because, uh, that's a, that represents a 25% increase over those five years, um, that we were seeing going into the pandemic. This is what happened during, uh, the last two years. Tiffany spoke to the coordinated efforts that were taken across the system to reduce the jail population. And you can see the resulting, uh, decrease that was quite significant over a two to three week period back in March and April of 2020. What that did, um, and Tiffany mentioned, it, it closed the annex, but what that did is also reduced the operational capacity by about 76 beds. So right now, currently, the occupational capacity for the detention facility is 469 beds. The lowest point of the local jail population during the pandemic was in July of 2020 at 262. We experienced a slight uptick after that and then the population really stabilized for nearly 10 months, right around 325, um, give or take month to month. And that's after those initial immediate responses were initiated and also after lockdown measures in the community were lifted. You've now see at the, towards the right-hand side of the graph, towards the end of the summer, we experienced a, another increase, the highest, uh, population we've seen to date during the pandemic, 395 for the local jail population. Um, we've kind of hovered around that for the remainder of 2021, but did experience a slight dip, um, uh, just this past month in December. What you'll notice is going into the pandemic with that green line, the contract population was over a hundred, uh, on, on average every day, and that has significantly been reduced. Uh, now we're, uh, looking more in the low 60s for the average daily population for the contract, um, population. So the jail population is a function of two factors. And the first is the number of entries into the jail, which is something that's largely driven by law enforcement. And that second factor is the length of time those entries stay in custody. And that's driven by judicial release decisions and case processing. So on the left, you have misdemeanor bookings, felony and misdemeanor bookings, uh, from 200, uh, 2015 through this last calendar year. And what you would notice is even prior to the pandemic, we were seeing a decline in that trend. 2020 and 2021, uh, we realized significantly fewer entries into the jail, uh, than in previous years. As Tiffany noted, one of the things that we're unsure about is to what extent the impact of some of the challenges, um, of, uh, Asheville Police Department with regards to staffing accounts for that versus some of the policy and practice changes that account for that. So the trend for entries into the jail have been increasing, yet we know the jail population, excuse me, decreasing, yet the jail population is increasing. So what we, we, we know is that our driver, uh, for our jail population in Buncombe County is length of stay. And what you see on the right-hand side are these felony and misdemeanor bookings, average length of stay. And you can see, uh, that since 2015, uh, that length of stay has increased on average by, uh, a total of five days. So I want to talk a little bit about, um, critical points in the population, um, and those levels where decisions, uh, will need to be made, um, in terms of how to best and safely manage the jail population. So in addition to shutting down the annex, um, during the pandemic, the population numbers allowed the detention facility to transition a female unit, unit to a male unit. C dorm, uh, will need to transition back to a female unit when the population regularly exceeds 50 for the, for females. During the pandemic, as you see in the chart below, just to provide some context of where we've been in relation to that number, um, the local female average daily population reached 54 in August of 2021. And you can see that prior to the pandemic, the local female population was close to double its current levels. When C dorm transitions back to, uh, a, a female, uh, housing unit, the male capacity will then be reduced. And so if the annex stays offline, the male operating capacity will then be 381, which happens to be the average daily population for all males, um, in custody, uh, in December of 2021, just this last month. Um, the local, uh, male average daily population was 384 in September of 2019, five months before the pandemic. So we're really budding up to some of these trigger points. And so then the question is, what are some of those strategies, uh, to address these, the, the population changes? So these first two, uh, listed in this table, uh, address the contract population. So statewide misdemeanor confinement program, which is a very small population, um, and then the federal contract population, which is, um, a bigger population and it's the population that has been the most significantly reduced during the pandemic on the contract side. Both of these come with a loss of revenue. As those populations, uh, decrease, uh, these revenues do, uh, go into the, our general fund dollars and so there are expenditures tied to those. So those are, and so that is a consideration. Another response is to reopen the annex. So this brings back beds online, approximately 76 operational, um, capacity. There are building improvements that will, are, um, are immediate and would, and need to be made, uh, in order to get that, uh, facility to a place where, um, operations, can occur. There's also ongoing building, uh, improvements that will need to be made over the next 10 years. And then there's also reoccurring cost of staffing, um, that would, uh, be required. The considerations here are around staffing as it relates to current market and being able to fill those positions and retain those positions. Also, the annex, uh, is, is not, uh, the ideal housing unit in terms that is not, uh, aligned with best practice in terms of correctional supervision. So again, not an ideal housing unit to bring back online. Finally, we have housing in other county. This is actually something that did occur for the female population back in 2017. Um, the, the jail called around to some of the, uh, jails in Western North Carolina. It's, we, it's cost of approximately $60 per day plus transport, um, but the consideration there is most of those jails are currently at capacity and would not have beds available to utilize. And I'm going to pass it back to Tiffany.
Thank you. And, and kind of wrapping up, what we're seeing possibly is like, what opportunities can we look at, can be considered by our, uh, court partners? Again, the, uh, bookings is more so driven by law enforcement bringing folks in. How long they stay end up being a case processing, uh, judicial official decision-making, um, we're looking at how long people are staying in conjunction with other partners, um, such as DA's office, public defenders or defense attorneys, probation, um, usually, um, are the ones that, uh, manage, uh, the court process and how long folks end up staying in jail. So these would be strategies to help kind of manage the how long they stay part, um, addressing failure to appear. And I think what's significant in this slide is just reduction of one to two bookings per day would look annually at saving 10 beds a day on average. Um, use or expanded use of unsecured bonds for low level charges. If we reduce the length of stay, so not necessarily how many people staying, but that overall decision can be, um, made in a day and a half or less, we're looking at saving about 7.4 beds a day when you total the volume, um, from the reduction of people staying. If, uh, uh, releases of class two and three misdemeanors happened before folks appeared, uh, for their first appearance, um, if we can reduce that by three days, we end up saving 4.7 jail, um, beds a day. And then lastly, um, reducing kind of those top A, um, top misdemeanor charges and the low level felonies, reducing that length of stay by three days. Um, so none of these are significantly reductions by a week, but when you look at how many cases you are reducing, uh, by those days, you end up getting 17, uh, beds saved per day. And this is of course on average. Um, and so these would yield us probably, um, the most beds to look at, uh, managing our jail population without tapping into those considerations you saw on the previous tab or slides.
Tiffany?
I think that's our final slide. So opportunity for any questions?
Tiffany, real, real fast on that, that last slide, could you explain that, that last bullet to me? It's class one.
Sure. Those class one, um, A1 misdemeanors are usually, uh, say driving while intoxicated or domestic violence related charges. If you just reduce the length of stay, so if a decision is made on a case, uh, let's say on average, three days sooner. So instead of making a decision on Friday, whatever that decision, um, you will make it on a Tuesday, you would see a reduction overall, uh, 17 beds per day for those case types.
Okay.
Hopefully I answered the question.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I have one question. On the state and federal contracts, um, my question is, and, and this, I don't necessarily expect you to have this information, like, you know, uh, just off the top of your head, but obviously there's revenues that are paid to the county as a result of providing the service for these other levels of, uh, organizations. But there's also costs to operate the facility too that are different with a different population, right, with a higher population. So I guess I'd just say, um, one of the things that would be helpful to, to me, uh, as we kind of think about these different options in the future, um, not that that's necessarily the option I would encourage us to go to first, but just to kind of understand, you know, uh, each of them would be to understand, like, what are the real, like, when we look at the income the county generates from entering into these contracts, but also the cost for operating them and implementing them, like, what that looks like, kind of intentality? Because I think sometimes we hear about the income, we don't necessarily know what the costs are. So just getting a com- a complete picture on that would be, I think, useful information to have. Commissioners, other questions?
Yes, I'd say that I, I agree with what you were just pointing out, because when I look at that and I look at specifically the statewide program, I'm thinking, you know, 10 beds really makes a difference to us when we're looking at these numbers and $135,000. I can't imagine, doesn't seem like the, um, the loss of revenue would actually weigh out as a reason for us to continue with that. But that's why I think looking at those numbers would be really important. But I also wanted to say that, so are there plans to work with our judicial partners? It seems like when we look at this, we'd need to certainly be looking at, um, working with our sheriff and our judicial partners to look at what are some of the ways, some of these potential opportunities here on this slide that you're talking about to, to improve or reduce that length of stay, especially when I hear about people having, you know, failure to appear. And it sounds like sometimes from what I've heard, that that's because they're not getting the message. I don't know if there's issue with communication there, but it looks like there could be some way to address some of these things and work with the judicial partners to see if we can make improvements.
I believe, um, I also want to recognize Commissioner Jasmine Beach for our, I believe has, has a question. Jasmine, can you hear us? Can we hear her?
I can. Can you all hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Wells actually said it very well. I was, uh, just going to say that I hope there's an opportunity to really prioritize working with our partners in the judiciary on, on solutions here. And, um, you know, I think as was stated in the presentation, the reduction that we saw occurred during the pandemic certainly shows what, what we're capable of in terms of, um, strategies that can reduce the, the jail population. I know that we've had, uh, many conversations over the year, uh, years around jail population and I have heard both at the community level and at the level of commission, um, zero desire to explore building a new jail. And with that being the case, it means, you know, that we have to just keep this, uh, priority front and center. I think the other thing, since we're having this conversation, that it's important to elevate and connect the dots on is, um, excuse me, how parts of this conversation relate to other work happening around responding to the, uh, often connected crises around addiction, mental health and homelessness in our community. And as we move forward in conversations around this, I would continue to be interested in ideas, um, around, uh, how we can be addressing what we know to be some of the upstream or underlying reasons that people end up being detained in the first place or caught in cycles of being detained or sometimes very specifically being detained when there's a fairly low level cash bail, um, that they just can't afford to pay. And so they're spending time in, in the jail because they don't have a, um, they don't have any other options around that. So we'd just like to make sure that as, at the commission level, as we're thinking about this, obviously there are some real pressure points, um, that we need to be attending to, but also think about how this connects into some of our other strategic and policy priority, um, areas. Thank you.
Does staff have any thoughts on the Terry and Jasmine questions? Or I guess just because, right, y'all are sort of suggesting that those conversations are, those partnerships are key. So y'all work on this stuff all the time, but is there, what else can we, I guess, sounds like a question, like what else can we do to foster a focus on, continued focus on this? Sheriff, thanks for being here. Welcome.
We, we did meet, um, the Attorney General Josh Shown convened, um, the Western North Carolina and did a pre-trial, uh, conference. I think one thing we took away from that meeting is just ongoing communication, collaboration, even establishing maybe a case processing or court operation meetings where we can kind of talk through some of the ideas and strategies and be proactive in employing them and then following up and make sure that they're effective. It's one thing that was suggested actually by, um, some of our court partners.
How you guys doing today?
Sheriff, good.
Oh, well, first, let me just simply say that I believe the staff has done a tremendous job in seeking out all opportunities we may have to address these issues. I think where we are now is there should be nothing that's off the table except for our desire to build a new facility, detention facility. And when I say that, I think that we need to, uh, speak with our judiciary system and see if there's other ways we can partner with everyone, because we have the COVID as example of what we could do when we all work together as we reduce the number of people who are incarcerated. And at the same time, it did not, as the data shows you, it did not have an increase in violent offenses that's happening in our community. So our community remained safe and we still were able to reduce the numbers of people who are incarcerated. But again, I think it's about how would we come together as one community and work together to find solutions. And so that would be my challenge to us as a county, as a community, how do we now work together? And we know that it can happen because of COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I would second what the sheriff said as far as working together with our judiciary partners. And this shows that we have some opportunities that we can work on. So thank you for asking the question. Thank you, Commissioner Beach for our, we would take that guidance and we will try to make sure we can convene those meetings and try to come up with some of those solutions. Again, COVID has shown us and that gives us an opportunity to see what we've been working on for years, especially with the MacArthur Grant. There are strategies out there that we know can, we can work. We just need that partnership to be stronger. And Brownie, to your question about the-
And Brownie, to your question about the costs to house those contracts, you know, Commissioner Wells' question, we're gonna run the jail anyway, so those are, we will look for incremental costs that may be. But if we take those away, we're still gonna have to run the jail. There's still gonna be lights, water, utilities and all that repaying. So I don't see a new cost to house those people. But we would definitely take a look to see if there's incremental costs that we can kind of parse that out and bring that back to you.
I understand, like, there are some fixed costs, of course, right? But, um, but I would like to understand the, the kind of incremental costs and how, what that looks like. Cause it is incremental cost on big numbers, right? Like, like running the detention center is very expensive. So I, I would like to understand that, uh, like, you know, if, if it's a hundred percent full, seventy-five percent full, fifty percent full, you know, show us what it costs to operate the facilities at these different kinds of levels so that we, um, we, we just, we understand the numbers. But I, I understand that there are a lot of fixed costs that will, that will be there. Commissioners, other questions?
Well, I would just note on the contracts to both state and federal, there's possibly also unintended consequences that should be explored as well if we are, um, not entering in our, our housing. The federal inmates that are in our community are the ones that have been sentenced in our community.
You know, the only other, uh, I would just say in this is, it's, it's, you know, at our budget retreat, we set affordable housing as one of our, our highest priorities. And, um, I mean, of course, in some ways these issues are distinct, but I just, you know, I think the more we kind of talk about this at the Affordable Housing Subcommittee level and, um, just the more how we see some of these issues really are very connected to, you know, I was at a meeting at the chamber a couple of weeks ago, but some, some, uh, some of the other folks who were here were there too, and business folks were expressing frustration about, you know, homelessness issues in the community and things like that. But, you know, people talked about, like, the experiences that they are having with folks who have mental illnesses in the community, but who are breaking the laws and, you know, causing a lot of frustrations. But, um, you know, and they were asking, why don't we do more to, you know, enforce our laws? But, um, you know, I think until we have, you know, until we are doing more as a community to really provide, um, housing solutions for the mental health issues we have in this community and the addiction problems we have in this community, we can, cause so much of this is, I just feel like we're asking our law enforcement and our judicial system to handle these other problems that our society has. And, um, and it's, and, and they're having to do it because that's where the problems are, they're landing on their doorsteps, but it's not where we ought to be really trying to solve these problems as a community. And so I think, I'm just, I'm glad that we've, you know, um, continued to focus on affordable housing and committed to making it an even higher priority than it has been. Because I think in the long run, until we have, uh, more solutions for folks, um, for safe places to, uh, for, to be housing and to get the, the services that they need to address those, those underlying conditions. Um, you know, it's different when people commit crimes and being held accountable when they do have a mental illness, right? Like, it's, it is a different situation and we can, we should not be treating all these folks, uh, the same or trying to, you know, have, have jails as their only solution for, when in many cases there's other, there's other things going on that we have just not stepped up to enough as a community to address. So I know, I know everyone agrees that, but I just want to say it because I feel like it's, a lot of those issues are having impacts on this side too. So I'm, I'm glad that we're not, glad we're talking about this, but I'm also glad we're talking about some of the other strategies to, uh, to more effectively address it long term too. Uh, Commissioners, are there any other questions on this item before we move on? All right, thank you all, appreciate you. Um, the last item on the agenda is, um, the North Carolina Workforce Development Board Consolidation Study. And we have Nathan Ramsey, former county commission chair. Thank you for being with us, it's always good to see you, Nathan.
Thank you so much, Chairman Neiman, Commissioners, Madam Manager. Uh, thank you for allowing me to, to be here today. And, uh, I'll see if the presentation is on the screen, okay? Um, so I, I know many of you are familiar with the workforce board. Uh, at least you may be, receive a lot of emails from me and I apologize if I fog up your inbox. Um, but the Workforce Development Board is one of over five hundred workforce boards in, in the nation, created through federal legislation, most recently the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. Uh, that law mandates that the majority of workforce board members, uh, and our workforce board has twenty-nine members, are private sector members. So, uh, our private sector members are listed on this slide, which include many Buckham County companies. Um, and we also have many partner agencies, uh, who also serve on the workforce board. And we're so grateful for the many partners that help, uh, meet the workforce and talent needs of, of our region. Um, so in, uh, uh, in North Carolina, there are currently, uh, twenty-three workforce development boards. There are soon to be twenty-two. So, uh, there's a board in, uh, this east, uh, central part of the state, Triangle South. It's sort of in a, uh, crimson, uh, Asheville high red. Uh, their, uh, Triangle South, it will be consolidated, uh, into two other boards because the administrative entity chose to, to do that. So there, there will be twenty-two workforce boards in, in North Carolina. And the Mountain Area Workforce Board includes, uh, the four counties in the Land of Sky region. Uh, as you well know, Buckham, Madison, Henderson and Transylvania. Want to thank, uh, Commissioner Wells for serving on the Land of Sky Board and all the support that y'all provide, uh, to Land of Sky Regional Council. Um, the NC Works Commission is our state workforce development board. And it's sort of the equivalent of our local workforce development board. It helps develop policies, it's, uh, majority, uh, employer led. And, uh, uh, the members are appointed by the governor. And we have two members, uh, on the commission who are actually from Buckham County that are representatives of Vertell Hospitality and Highland Brewery, and they do a wonderful job. At the end of their November tenth meeting, uh, Chair, the workforce, the NC Works Commission Chair, Tom Raven, announced that the governor, uh, and he had met, and the governor wanted to study the, explore the possibility of aligning the workforce board regions with the state's eight prosperity zone regions. And so that would, uh, effectively, uh, take the number of workforce boards down from, uh, twenty-two to eight. And, uh, and in our region, the Western Prosperity Zone, there are thirteen counties. Uh, the rationale at the time, uh, and I think what was presented would, it would help better align workforce and economic development in the state. And so there is a study committee, uh, that is meeting now. They'll present a report in early February. It's through their governance and systems, systems alignment committee. And they are making, uh, uh, work throughout the state with surveys, interviews and other things to explore of what recommendation they will, they will make. And so here you see a map, and this was just sort of a screenshot, uh, but it shows the eight prosperity zones, uh, coincided with the state's workforce development board regions. So as I mentioned, the Western Prosperity Zone includes thirteen counties. It includes the four Land of Sky counties, then, uh, the seven counties to our west, uh, to the Tennessee line through the Southwestern Commission. And then two of the counties in the foothills commission, which would be Rutherford and, uh, Polk. And so, uh, that region would include everything from just west of Shelby, uh, to just past Murphy. Um, so what are prosperity zones? Uh, prosperity zones are created through state legislation. Uh, and they're a way that the state allocates resources. So, uh, we often have representatives of state agencies, uh, based on prosperity zones. That certainly happens with the Department of Commerce, uh, it happens with other agencies as well. And, uh, the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, which is our state's public-private partnership that is out and recruits, uh, companies and helps companies expand in our region, uh, in the state. They have an existing industry person that's dedicated to each of those prosperity zones. Um, so, um, what does the law say about workforce development board consolidation? So we operate through the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. It was passed on a overwhelming bipartisan, uh, majority in, uh, twenty-fourteen. And it was, uh, the latest federal workforce legislation. If you recall, prior to that, it was the Workforce Investment Act, WIA. Uh, there was the Job Training Partnership Act prior to that, CETA, and, and so forth. Um, you should have a, a copy of our consortium agreement, uh, in your packet. The consortium agreement is the agreement among the four counties in the Mountain Area region. And it provides that, uh, that local agreement continues until, um, the area is re-designated by the governor or, uh, a member body chooses to terminate the agreement. And, um, and notice, uh, in Article eleven, um, that, uh, you would give a six month notice if you, you choose to terminate, uh, the agreement to the other counties. And then there would be potential redesignation. Uh, there's also potential for the governor to re-designate workforce regions if they fail performance, if there's substantial fiscal misconduct, or they failed to engage in regional planning. But really, none of those three, uh, examples are, are relevant to this conversation because I'm not sure of any boards really fall under, uh, the, those restrictions. So at the end of the day, this is really up to the local counties in our region on what they want to do and how they want to move forward. So, uh, our consortium agreement, the latest consortium agreement was entered into two, uh, in, uh, to the counties, but in two thousand and fifteen. This was at the time of the transition from WI to WIOA. And the chief local elected official is the chair of the county commission, uh, in each of the four counties. And so, uh, we, there was a rotation of, of the chief elected official. Uh, and I think it started with Buckham, then it went to Henderson, then it went to Madison. Now, uh, it's with Transylvania. Um, and our current chief local elected official is Vice Chair Jake Dalton with the Transylvania Board of Commissioners. Uh, he is serving in that role since Chairman, uh, Jason Chapel also serves as the NC Works Career Center Manager in Henderson and, uh, Transylvania Counties through Blue Ridge Community College and the Department of Commerce. It indicated that would be a conflict for him to serve in the chief elect, elected official role as well as serving his, uh, career center manager. As you see, uh, Buckham actually appoints the four regional positions. So you appoint, uh, fifteen of the twenty-nine members on the workforce board. And so, uh, I'm here today to just, uh, ask you what, uh, would be the, uh, discretion and, uh, direction that you want to, to provide? Uh, would you want to remain a four county region for the workforce board? Would you want to expand to a thirteen county region like the Western Prosperity Zone? Or some other number? Um, and so again, I want to emphasize, this decision is really up to you. The NC Works Commission can make a recommendation, the governor can, uh, and we certainly respect the governor and the NC Works Commission for whatever, uh, direction they want to provide. But at the end of the day, this is up to the, the counties in our, our local area. Uh, the Department of Commerce has been incredibly generous to Mountain Area Workforce Development Board. We've probably got more discretionary funding from Department of Commerce for workforce development programs than any board in the state. And it's helped, uh, our programs like with our Upskill, which is now Arc Inspire, uh, our early childhood, uh, workforce expansion project. We work with Buckham Partnership for Children and many other projects would not have been possible without earlier funding through, uh, Department of Commerce. Um, so, uh, it appears that they will make a recommendation, uh, to align the workforce boards with the, uh, prosperity zones, but, uh, will, that remains to be seen and pending that re, report in February. Um, so ultimately, uh, Buckham County, Henderson, Transylvania, Madison need to get together and decide what y'all want to do. If one county in the region chooses to, uh, want, uh, to change the local workforce region, it effectively enables the governor then to, uh, call for redesignation. Um, and again, the governor cannot do this, you know, latterly, but he does have significant, uh, powers. So there was just a couple of questions I wanted to throw, uh, throw out and, you know, uh, discuss and, and what you might feel like is, uh, is maybe the best course of action. If you notice on the, the, this slide, there are two maps. One on the far left is, uh, a map of North Carolina's interconnected labor markets. So that identifies what the Department of Commerce Labor Act and Economic Analysis Division determines what actual labor markets where people live and work in the same region. And so if you look in our region, uh, it's basically the four Land of Sky counties plus Haywood. Haywood is also in the Asheville metro based on that, that designation. And I, I think the number is, uh, something like seventy-five percent of the people that live, uh, in those five, five counties, work in those five counties. But we also know that our workforce regions are much larger than that. Uh, we're getting ready to do a workforce study that was a follow-up from a two thousand and eighteen study we did in partnership with the Asheville Chamber and the North Carolina Chamber and with RTI. And, uh, that study includes, uh, ten counties. Um, so ultimately the determination is, why do you want to consolidate? Is, is the goal to better serve employers, job seekers, youth? Is it to potentially, uh, save, uh, funding, uh, through administrative costs? Um, is it to allow for better alignment with economic development? Would consolidation promote more regionalism? Would consolidation allow for better service delivery? Uh, and would a mega region like a prosperity zone, uh, share similar, uh, commuting patterns and employer needs, uh, is what we see now. So that, would an employer in, uh, in Spandale have the same issues as an employer at Nashville? Or would they have the same issues as an employer in, in Bryson City or Murphy? Um, the, the map on the right are the sixteen COG regions. Uh, and in the western part of the state, uh, all of the workforce boards are actually aligned with the COG, the councils of government. Uh, I think eleven of the sixteen councils of government actually are the administrative entity or a workforce board. And then, uh, finally, I just want to share, um, a, a quote from the Asheville Chamber. Thoughts about how we work with economic development? And this is from the Asheville Chamber since we're in Buckham, but we work also with our other county economic developers and our, uh, friends at the Department of Commerce, EDP NC and other entities. And, uh, and, and they say that partnership with Mountain Area Workforce Development Board is central to achieving our economic development goals in Western North Carolina. The workforce board's support for initiatives like the WNC Career Expo helps address immediate hiring needs within our tight labor market by connecting employers and talent in real time through efforts like our triennial, uh, State of the Workforce Survey. The workforce board keeps area economic development organizations and employer leaders informed on changing trends in talent recruitment, retention, sh- and shaping workforce development initiatives like the inclusive hiring partners effort that help expand economic mobility prosperity and more evenly and equitably across our region. Uh, our staff, the workforce staff also provide technical assistance to support local economic development efforts, including transformational relocation and expansion projects like Pratt and Whitney, uh, and others. Uh, simply put, our partners at the Work, Mountain Area Workforce Development Board help make the day-to-day work of business recruitment expansion in Western North Carolina possible. So, um, I know we have much room for improvement. Uh, certainly the workforce board could, uh, be far better than it is today. That's the main area of improvement. If the Land of Sky director would fire the workforce director, then, you know, get somebody better that, uh, actually knows, knows what they're doing. But, um, uh, we're just, uh, you know, at the end of the day, economic development, workforce development, I think now more than ever are aligned. And workforce development is really about the power of partnerships. It's like the previous presentation, uh, from the Sheriff's Department regarding the detention capacity. Uh, it takes a lot of organizations working together to help build our workforce. And it's not only our K-12 community college university partners, but it's so many nonprofits. Uh, when you go across the spectrum from early childhood education through, uh, substance use disorder, uh, recovery and so many other things. Um, really it takes an all hands on deck approach. We know right now Buckham County has a two-point-eight percent unemployment rate. Um, you're the second, uh, our region has the second lowest unemployment rate of any place in North Carolina. Uh, but we also know we have about, uh, ten thousand less people working today than we did pre-pandemic. And we have about, uh, twenty-four thousand, uh, job openings. And we have about, uh, 24,000, uh, job openings in our region. So, uh, to help, uh, meet those needs to promote, uh, economic opportunity for, so everyone can, uh, participate in the prosperity that we all want to see for them and their family, uh, you know, it takes us all working together. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, and I appreciate, uh, this opportunity to share with you today.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Nathan.
Yeah, thank you, Nathan. Thanks for the important work that you do. And I'm curious from your perspective, which way, and I'd be curious to hear from Tim, Tim as well with this, um, is your perspective that we, we stay with the way we're set up now with the four counties? Or do you see benefits to going the other way? I'd be interested in hearing kind of the pros and cons from your perspective.
Um, well, and I'm trying to present this in a neutral way because really the Land of Sky Board hasn't spoken on this. The Mountain Area Board hasn't spoken. It's a, been a fluid situation. We haven't had a board meeting, uh, to discuss this since, uh, that November 10th NC Works Commission meeting. So, uh, we are gonna, I am gonna share this with our workforce board at the end of this month and, and, and also with Land of Sky Board. So I think most people would, uh, if you step back and say, should North Carolina have 22 workforce development boards, uh, they'd probably say that's too many. Uh, and we have several boards today, like, uh, like Mecklenburg, Gaston, Guilford, Davidson and Durham, that are single county boards. So you, in the triangle, you have Wake, Durham and Orange are all in three separate workforce development board regions. Probably doesn't, you know, if you were drawing the map today, you probably wouldn't do that. You know, the challenge is if Durham County or the, actually the city of Durham wanted to join capital area, uh, joining workforce board, they could do that today. But for whatever reason, they've chosen not to do that. And in some of the single county regions like Guilford and Mecklenburg, you know, you have Guilford's case over a half a million and Mecklenburg over a million just in one county. So our region, you know, we're just south of a half a million. So, um, um, you know, you, you, you could say, you know, we shouldn't have a single county board. I don't really think you will save, if the goal is to save money, uh, I don't necessarily think you will do that. So for example, Mountain Area, right now, we only have two full-time workforce development board staff. All of our other funding is through contracts. So for adult dislocated worker services in Buckham and Madison County, our contractor is AB Tech. And in Henderson, Transylvania, it's Blue Ridge. And for our youth programs, it's Madison County Schools. Uh, they cover Madison. Goodwill covers, um, uh, Buckham and Transylvania. And Henderson County Schools, uh, serves Henderson County. Um, I think if you have a larger region, you're gonna, it's gonna require more administrative oversight. So, you know, it wouldn't necessarily save money. Would it help us to better align with economic development? Um, you know, it may, it may not. Some boards might not be as engaged with their economic developers. Um, you know, all of our regions' economic developers at the state and local level, I mean, they have my cell phone number, I have their cell phone number. If, if they have a project they're working on or they need something, you know, we work together, we meet regularly. But, uh, I really don't want to come out today and, uh, tell you what you should do because I think, you know, my job, you know, at one time, you know, I was in a more policy-oriented role, but, you know, my job now is not to make policy, it's to execute, uh, policy. And I think this is really a, a policy decision, uh, that you would need to make. The challenge is, let's say that one of the counties in the Mountain Area region said, we want redesignation, we want to be among a larger region. You're still gonna have to go to your adjoining counties. So would Haywood want to join? Would some of the southwestern counties want to join? So it's still a, a discussion that the counties would have to determine, um, whether, you know, what, what that geographic footprint should be. So, uh, I will say, you know, on a regional basis, we work very closely with our neighboring workforce boards. So on projects like a Pratt and Whitney, you know, it's all hands-on deck with, with High Country, with foothills, with southwestern, uh, and, and with, you know, and sometimes when we have a major layoff, like with the, uh, close, upcoming closing of the Continental Automotive Facility in, uh, in Henderson County, we work on a regional basis to try to address those. But ultimately, this is a, a policy decision, uh, that you gotta make. And, uh, I, I can't right now tell you, you know, what you should do.
Um, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Nathan, do you have any idea what the structure would look like of the new board if it went to that prosperity zone?
Um, well, I mean, that would be ultimately up to the consortium agreement, how's, what do you want the size of the board to be? Under WIOA, there are certain ratios that you have to meet. So like we have a 29-member board at Mountain Area. You know, I don't know how big a board you want to have, but at some point in time, it gets a little unwieldy. Um, you know, I know we can have virtual meetings, but if you have an employer in Rutherford County and, and Cherokee County, they're probably not gonna meet in person very often just because of the geography. So, um, um, so I, I think, you know, but you have a lot of flexibility. The chief local elected official has tremendous of, of flexibility on how they want to, uh, move forward. Uh, I'm assuming, you know, uh, even though the chair of the commission is the chief elected official in each of our counties, they're gonna consult closely with their, their fellow commissioners and, and determine which path they think is best, uh, for their county.
Nathan, am I correct in summarizing your presentation that are, we don't have just two choices between the status quo and these, these eight prosperity zone options?
Yes, yes, Commissioners, Salome. So there's a potential that the recommendation could come out and we think that the, the NC Works Commission studies would say, we already have these COG regions in place. They've been in place for over 50 years that manage, uh, tens of millions, hundreds of millions of federal dollars. They know how to do that and be compliant. So, you know, there's a potential of, uh, you know, that, that's one, uh, uh, item that's under consideration. There may be other options under consideration as well. The COG directors really don't have a, a formal position. We have some COGs, uh, like Centralina that have single county boards. And, uh, and so, you know, if the city of Charlotte, Mecklenburg County doesn't want to consolidate, then that COG is not gonna take a, you know, contrary position. But, um, you know, the, the challenge with the prosperity zone region is there's no entity in those prosperity zones that administer a program. So they're, they're just a way that the state allocates an individual and says, we're gonna cut up the state to provide services. So we'll have eight staff, you know, statewide that will be the local person who oversees some state program. But there's no, there's no administrative capacity, a finance director, you know, any entity that can accept federal funds and implement a federal program, which is y'all well-known as, is, is very bureaucratic. And, uh, I'm really blessed that, you know, Land of Sky, we have great staff that, you know, keep us hopefully out of trouble because, uh, we, uh, there's a lot of hoops to jump through.
Well, thank you. I, I, I don't have strong opinions about this, but I was, I was looking at, at, at your presentation last night and with the prosperity zones, it kind of seemed too big for our region was my gut reaction. You know, ma, maybe in, in Charlotte or the triad, those areas are already enormous suburban areas where employers and, and people commute those distances already. But I, I kinda, just something you said earlier, I kinda, I kinda would, would agree that someone in Spindale or someone in, in, um, you know, Cherokee County and Murphy, those types of employers, um, employees have different needs and desires and, and goals than, than, than someone in, in Asheville. And those distances are, you know, pretty lengthy. And so it just, it just kind of seems a little bit too big for us, is my gut reaction, I guess is my point.
And I'd say my initial reaction is, I think it works well where, with our, the four that are included. And I, and I do feel like you all work regionally already. And I think, I mean, I think that is a great thing, but I don't think that we necessarily would need to go to the prosperity zones for you to be working regionally. So that would be my initial thought.
Are there any other questions at this time? So, so I don't think we're gonna actually make a decision today. I mean, but I, I think this is really helpful to understand all the issues and, um, as we kind of think this through and provide, you know, we're gonna provide feedback on this. So any other questions or overall, any other questions?
Do you have a timeline of when you need a decision from the board?
Uh, no. Madam Manager, um, again, this report will be released, uh, early February from the NC Works Commission. I assume at some point in time, you'll find out how, you know, um, focused the Department of Commerce, uh, Governor's Office is in making this happen. Uh, and like I said, I respect Governor Cooper, he's, his administration. The time I've been workforce director has been incredibly supportive of, of the work of our workforce board. And so, uh, but this, you know, study was, uh, commissioned at the direction of, of Governor Cooper.
Nathan, thank you so much for coming to talk to us about this today. And, uh, we will, I'm sure this has given us a lot to think through and we'll, um, we'll come back. And if we have any, uh, additional thoughts that we want to contribute to, we, uh, look forward to talking with you further about it.
And, and again, Chairman Neiman, I would encourage you to reach out to your, your fellow, uh, commissioners chairs in other counties and to get their initial thoughts. Um, and, and, you know, cer, certainly whatever decision y'all make will, um, will be, um, you know, we'll work to implement that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Madam Manager.
All right. Commissioners, we have gotten through all the items on our agenda. So I think we can, uh, take a 15-minute break. We'll adjourn and we'll reconvene at 5 o'clock for our, um, regular meeting.